Good evening. Welcome to the Akushnet School Committee Meeting of Tuesday, February 9th, 2021. Per Governor Baker's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, the public will not be allowed to physically access the school committee meeting. Members of the public can access the meeting via live stream at the link noted on our agenda, which is on our website as well as the town's website. In addition, the events will be rebroadcast on local cable access channel. The school committee reserves the right to implement additional remote participation procedures and will notify the public of these procedures as soon as is practicable. We're going to call to order our meeting this evening. I would ask members to please mute yourself when you're not speaking to keep background noise down. We have no approval of minutes or warrants this evening, and we will have delegation, so I want to welcome any public comment. Please forward any comments to our recording secretary, Kelly Benavides, at kellybenavides@akushnetschools.us. And we're going to move right into the purpose of our meeting this evening, which is to provide a presentation on the outcome of our recent focus groups. And after that presentation, we'll circle back to delegation, just to allow some time for those comments to come in. So, Dr. Bailey, do you want to do an introduction, please?
Sure. As you recall, a few meetings back, we had talked about conducting some focus groups to get all stakeholders' perceptions about our operations and things going on during the pandemic with the operations of the school department during COVID-19. So, we brought in Dr. Maestis, who conducted focus groups, and I know he will explain the process to us tonight. But without further ado, I'd love for him to let us know the outcomes of those focus groups. So, Dr. Maestis, thank you for your time.
Thank you, and it's good to see everybody again. I've had a very distinct opportunity to get in and talk to the focus groups around the community, and it's been very engaging. And the highlight of my time in Akushnet has been visiting with the elementary and middle school kids. They're very upfront and very accommodating, and it was just wonderful to be in the school and to see them. I did 10 focus groups, and I will go over that in just a bit. So, I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. I did prepare a slide deck so that you could kind of get some information based on the reports that were forwarded to you. I'll talk a little bit about that. So, I'm going to go and share a screen here, and then we'll get on with the presentation. Hold on one second. Just want to make sure I got the... Let's go with two. All right. Can everybody see that?
Yep.
Okay, awesome. All right. So, let's go ahead and move on to the first slide here. I had the opportunity to meet with you and just, you know, get some level of direction on what I would be working on in Akushnet as far as trying to get the perceptions of the community on what was happening with the operations in the school district during this most difficult time. And I did have the opportunity to meet with, you know, the cross-section of stakeholders for the community to get their beliefs and understanding of how things are working on the first semester of the 2021 school year. You know, my name is Gary Maestis, and I have been educated for 32 years, administrator for 26, superintendent for 12, and pleased from this point on, I invite you to call me Gary, and we can proceed that way. I do have a background on program evaluation, and I've worked with schools around the world on school district analysis, self-analysis, and also strategic planning to be able to set a direction for school districts to realize their potential. And that's what I've spent a lot of my time doing in the later part of my career. So, here's a little bit of background of how we started. There was a survey that was created. I sent a variety of questions to Dr. Bailey. She shared them with you. You had the opportunity to review those questions, and then we honed those questions, fine-tuned them. We added a few. Very difficult to have too many questions in an hour and a half, but we did have eight Zoom focus groups. Those were done. They were scheduled, and I'd send out a stakeholder meeting signup through an online application, Google Form, which collected it. I set it up so that it gave options based on the stakeholder group, and they were able to register. Once they registered, I sent them an individual email, letting them know when their group was scheduled based on what they signed up for. So, we got all that structured and set up, and the dates listed here are the dates that we met. We started in December, end of December, and went all the way to January 20th. The last groups that I did were at Akushnet Elementary and Middle School on the 20th, and it was very, very engaging. And I have to tell you, your community was extremely gracious, very accommodating. You know, I was... The only issue that I had was I had to move one stakeholder group on January 12th from 4:00 to 6:00, and that was with parents. So, that one I had to move. That was a scheduling conflict on my end. The parents were very accommodating. I had one parent that I could not meet with, and I sent her an email to try to reschedule, and it just never worked out. So, I did do a couple of individual interviews because they couldn't make the opportunities that were presented. So, and I, you know, I had no problem at all if people needed to meet at a different time. I just made it happen. So, we'll get into the two documents that were sent to you. They both have a cover sheet on them. They're very voluminous, a lot of information. The first document that you received was the report, and that is a report and key themes that I pulled from the transcripts from these meetings. So, the first document really identifies responses to the seven questions. Some of those questions, parents, stakeholders, community groups had the opportunity to answer these questions, but they, in some cases, they were, you know, really addressed within one of the two or three questions that were before some of the others. So, you'll kind of get an idea of what those are. And the second document is an addendum, and the addendum really is a transcript of every single opportunity. So, there are eight separate transcripts in that addendum, and that is a... And I tried to keep it as true as possible without editing or taking any of that, because I wanted you to have a good sense of what people were saying. And, you know, it's very emotional. It was some very emotional conversations with parents. I'm going to stop sharing for a little bit. It was very... I think for a lot of parents, it was difficult to express that their kids are not thriving the way they would under normal conditions. And I think that was really one of the themes that we'll see. But they were extremely... And I give a lot of credit to every single group of parents. You know, we had parents that had opinions on one side or the other, but they were extremely, extremely respectful of that position, and they really understood. They really... Hold on one second. I'm not sure how my video stopped. Can you see me? Okay. So, I think that was a... You know, I think I just wanted you to know that your community was just so, so good about it, and the students. You know, I was concerned that they don't know me, and I'm going to go in there, and they're not going to say much. The minute I asked for responses, they were just... Hands went up, and it was a great bonding moment, and they just went off. And they really enjoyed the time. I enjoyed the time, and I think they felt that they were heard. And hopefully, the report tonight will give you a sense of their feelings, their beliefs, and also their difficulties, because I think all of us realize that education in this space today is a lot more challenging than it was a year, well, a little bit more than a year ago. So, any questions so far, and then I can get into the questions? Okay, let's move on. So, I'm going to go right to the next slide here, and I'm going to share this. So, the questions, the first question was relative to, you know, what's gone well. You know, what's gone well during COVID. The second one was, you know, what are the challenges that you're experiencing during the pandemic? That was probably the more lively discussion questions. Question three was one that was another one that had a lot of discussion around it, and this was the three-foot distancing protocol, if there was any desire or wish to really go to a three-foot distancing model four or five days a week. And question three had a sub-question, which was relative to transportation, and we'll get into that. A lot of input on that. And then question four was about the hybrid model and the rigor of education. And I think there was a great deal of descriptive examples of what kids are doing, what's not happening, and the differences between a regular education model and the hybrid model, and how challenging it's been with technology and things of that nature. And five was, any suggestions that you have? And there were a lot of suggestions. I think the teachers had some suggestions. And, you know, I think now that people have lived under the hybrid model, you know, they didn't know what it was going to be like in September. Now that they've seen it, I think they have some different ideas. The next was question six, that was relative to the three-foot or six-foot distancing around masks and sit breaks, where kids could take a sip of water in the classroom. Would it be out of the classroom? Could they remove their mask? I mean, there are a lot of different scenarios that people were posing. And question seven was relative to the quality of education, specifically on remote days. And really, this one was kind of centered around... Let me back up a little bit here. A lot of that... I've got all kinds of screens here, so let me move back here. So, that question really also was focusing on the needs of students with special education. And I think that was a theme that was heard from question three all the way through question seven, was, I think, the theme of special education came up quite a bit on the needs of special education kids and how difficult it was to meet their IEP requirements. So, I think that was one of those areas that we will talk about. So, I'm going to go ahead and jump into the first question and present to you some key themes that were presented. The first question was...
Excuse me, Gary?
Yes?
Your screen is showing a bunch of different... I don't know if you can change it so that we're just seeing the slide at hand.
Let me... Is that better?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, great. Sorry. I was on presenter mode, not on the present mode. So, the first question was relative to the, you know, what's going well with the education model. And the students, right away, they said, this is so much better than it was the second semester of 2020. They were able to see their friends. They were able to be in school and see their teachers. One of the kids brought up how their food options were better, and I don't know what changed between then and now, but they felt that the options were definitely better now than they were before. But the students were very engaging, and they felt very grateful to be in school. They felt that the masks weren't really too much of an issue anymore. They do understand the importance of protocols, and... But I think the number one thing that they brought up, and this was pretty much across the board with kids, is that they just enjoy being in that environment. They enjoyed coming to school every day, enjoyed being with their cohort, with their colleagues. And so, I think that was a big piece for them. The next group was the parents, and one thing that is prevalent throughout these different groups that we met on this particular question was the appreciation for the school system and the dedication to the schedule that was selected. And that was referenced time and time again by the different groups, that they really feel that Akushnet got it right with the schedule, that they took into consideration the challenges that were out there, and that they presented a model, and were running with a model that was really making things work during this most difficult time. A great deal of appreciation for the testing that is going on from the fire department, and they felt that the communication coming out of central office was exceptional, based on what's happening in the community, what the conditions are with COVID in the community, conditions in the school, and how that immediacy of information was coming out. They thought it was well-done, systematic. And again, you'll hear that theme on the other stakeholder groups. The next one, teachers and support staff communication, again, was one of those pieces. They felt that although there's some of the communication is difficult because of the conditions that we're in, but they're very pleased to get it. The planning of school to get started, and this is separate from the Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, I think that was brought up with the teachers as well, but all the planning, the professional development that took place to start the school year was something that the teachers were very positive about. They felt that that was unusual, but yet it was necessary, because you typically don't get eight or 10 days of professional development before a school year. And the other piece around professional development that the teachers really felt was extremely beneficial was the work on Wednesdays that they have for beginning of the school year. There was a lot of time dedicated to curriculum and trying to have a level of consistency about what was happening with COVID and the operations and structural strategies. They really expressed a desire when we talk about the questions for suggestions about how to improve that and how to get more time for working in this area. I think they also were appreciative of the technology, although it's been very hard to get technology for schools across the country. They were appreciative that recently they started seeing more technology at the elementary, and that was appreciated. The school administration, they felt proud, I would use that word, that they felt proud that they were able to work as a collaborative team to get things rolling for the school year. And they included in that collaboration, the town administration, the police department, fire department, public health. They felt that that was so beneficial in ensuring that the local and state CDC requirements, along with the Department of Education requirements, were being worked on together, and that everyone was in favor and working together to ensure that these protocols were being implemented, designed and implemented for the best interest of the community and primarily the school system. So, that was a big piece. And then next one, again, I know I've said this with every one of these, but they were very grateful for the communication that's coming out and the systematic nature of that communication. Moving on to the town administration, I met with the town administrator, fire chief, police chief, you know, public health director, and they said that, and you can read in the transcript, that I think it was the fire chief has been around for 17 years, and he said that he's never had such great relationship, communication with the superintendent. So, I think that was a positive. And also with the town administration, that I think their comments were grounded much more than just COVID, but just operations of how the school year started and how the school year continues to work on. And they really said that, you know, things are working by design, that they were working because of the plan. And I think they felt very comfortable that all the things that they worked on together, you know, based on guidelines that were provided to them, that it was a collaborative effort. The next one was really a theme with school committee as well, and that is the communication. And I did hear from the school committee that they really appreciate that what the teachers are doing, and that, you know, it's a difficult time to be a teacher. It's a very difficult time to instruct and motivate children under this time, but they felt that a level of acknowledgement should go to the work they're trying to do under the conditions. And but I think that's the theme on that first question, but it was one of the shorter, you know, questions in terms of answers, because they were all the same. You know, they were all very similar. So, with that said, for you, Madam Chair, if you'd like to open up to questions on this question, I'd be more than willing to take them or anything else.
Sure. I don't have any questions personally, but I welcome the members to pose any questions, if they have any at this point.
All right. So, let's move on to question two. I'm going to share my screen and see if I can get the right view this time. Hold on one second. Which one do you see there?
It looks like your report.
Yeah, there you go. Is this...
There you go. Yeah, that looks right.
Okay. So, the next slide is relative to the challenges. And, you know, on one hand, with students, you know, they've adapted well to the mask. They brought up some issues with masks, in the sense that one young lady said to me, very concerned that can we have masks in the classroom for kids to, if they forget a mask, or if they don't have a mask that they like, that they could have a mask. And some of the kids said, well, they have masks at school. She said, no, what, how about a box in the classroom? Because I think it'd be awesome for kids that if they needed one, it's right there in front of them. So, I think a lot of, you know, thought was given to that by the kids. Another issue that they brought up was not seeing their friends that are in the other cohort. And I think they really miss not seeing their friends, their cohort is who they see. And they did bring up the desire to actually see some friends in the other cohort, which I think is one of those things that we could have expected, you know, because they don't see them, their friends that they've had for their education, and there's no opportunity to do that. And they also brought up that the online aspects to learning are challenging. And they said they're challenging because the teacher has to teach both the face-to-face students and the online students, and that can be challenging for students when, you know, a student online asks a question, and the teacher would go online and ask the question, or even if the student was, you know, face-to-face, and the other kids, they would say, well, how do we know that they're paying attention when they're on us, you know? So, I think that was one of the common themes that I heard and were almost compounded when kids were responding. And they also said that, relative to technology, is it's, you know, technology's been challenging because the internet in some of the homes is not the greatest, and at times it was cut out, and that to them was sometimes a challenge. The parents, they brought up consistently that the online education is inconsistent. Sometimes you can have a class that's very engaging, that has a great deal of depth to it, and then you can go to another class that might have a substitute in it, and they may not have the background and resources to be able to address that class. But that's been one of the challenges, and you'll see that even with the administration, is the amount of absences that we've seen in schools because of COVID, and how do we cover those classes? So, that's been some of a challenge. I think consistently, parents indicated that Wednesdays were just not fruitful, that they were not consistent, that it's been very difficult to motivate their own children to even want to get online and learn on Wednesdays. But it has been very difficult to engage their children. The support staff, excuse me, the biggest issue that I think was out there for parents, and I saw that across the board, was really the social, emotional, social and emotional strain that parents were witnessing across the board for their children. And, you know, we're talking children that, you know, I've heard citations of children that had anxiety in school under normal conditions, are thriving under this environment. But yet, on the other side, we have students that were very social and doing their thing in schools under normal conditions, feeling very connected at home, or starting to feel or even embrace isolation. So, I think it's created some level of social and emotional strife for families, and I think that is probably, it's listed third on the list, but I think there's a lot of citation across the board on families around, you know, social, emotional. They may not have used those words, social, emotional, but I think what they were describing are those difficulties during this time. And I think the third, for... Actually, let's move on to teachers and support staff. Teaching remotely is a challenge, and I think it almost parallelled the comments that the students have on, you know, teaching both remote and teaching face-to-face can be extremely challenging for teachers, because you have two distinct populations, and a child may be experiencing some technological issues. And there's just, it's very difficult to engage and support that child that's having those technology issues, and you have a class in front of you. And that was just one example of some of those remote challenges. The next one, the support staff are there, and I have to disqualify their statements, because the support staff in Akushnet, the ones that were on the forum, were extremely, extremely happy to be working in the school system. They had no issues at all about being reassigned. They were, you know what? I know it's difficult. I'm glad I have a job. I'm being moved from my role of where I was hired to be able to support teachers. I'm I'm being moved from my my role of where I was hired to be able to support teachers. Um and and I I I really enjoy that. Um but their biggest challenge was uh they don't have some of the technology background that the teachers do. And they felt that it would be absolutely wonderful if they could engage with some of that professional development that teachers are engaging in. So when they are in that environment, that they can step up and they can support students. Um you know, academically and instructionally uh with some of these tools that are out there for teachers. So. Um that's um the the theme uh there. And and the next one for teachers and support staff was. Um online expectations. And I think uh teachers were consistent in that, in in, you know, what's the expect? Expectation for students when they're at home to participate. Um and is, you know, I think the consistency from class in the classroom was somewhat of a challenge for them. And that, you know, some some teachers described situations where a child would log in. Um and if it was anywhere around lunchtime, the the child would disappear and and go have lunch and come back forty-five minutes later. Or, you know, twenty minutes later, they didn't know where they were. So I think that they they had this um this kind of um feeling of. You know, wh- what's expected by kids in the timeline of kids to be online. And they found that to be somewhat. Um difficult to manage. Um and and that expectation was difficult for them to to be able to understand. Um let's move on to school administration. Um parents are struggling, students, parents are struggling with students that are struggling, for excuse the the language there. Uh parents are struggling with students that are struggling. And and that's one of the things that um the the administration brought up is. Is that they are struggling uh with how with giving parents ideas on their children that are struggling because. Um they might be technology issues, they might be overload of uh the use of technology. Um and I think that's one of the things that we we brought up, uh that was brought up by parents, by teachers. Um and even by administration is, you know, kids are on um on on the computer. For for extended periods of time and they felt very uncomfortable with that. Um and the next one was uh lucky enough to be able to bring most of the kiddos back. Uh it's been a great option. Um but it's not available to everyone. And that that is a theme that was challenging for the administration. That um and this ties into special education because I think uh the administrators and superintendents, bed director in the districts. Probably challenged at a great level by parents with students who have IEPs. Um and and there's a very strict criteria on on how those students can come in uh for four days a week. Some students are coming in for more time than others, but those are a high impact. Um you know, IEPs that that need significant services. So um that was is a challenge for our administrators. They'd be understanding, they want to get uh more coverage for those um for those kiddos, but it's been it's been a challenge. Uh the next one is um staff absence. Um you know, one of the problems that. Um uh a cushion that has realized, just like every other school district, uh my former school district, we uh. We raised the the rate for substitutes by about fifty dollars a day, just to try to attract more substitutes into the district. Um but it's very difficult to get uh substitutes and support into schools when there's absences. Um uh the national average for teacher absences on a on a uh in in United States, and this is absences for sickness. Absences for leave of absence. Um and that's combined is ten absences per year per staff number. That's 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 under normal conditions. When you add COVID and you add uh quarantine. You add all these conditions that you pull staff out, it has created a significant problem for staff of absence. And I think for most school districts, um when you look at having more students in, that might be a factor. And looking at how do you fill the voids for um for staff coming in. Um and the and um the next one is is um, you know, they 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 said that the model is just. The way it is 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 just not sustainable. It's just very difficult to get staff in, very difficult when there's a crisis. I think um, you know, the the both both principals, middle school and elementary school are inundated. Uh and they didn't say this, that this is just through um my understanding of what they're doing every day. Uh there's a lot going on with. Uh cases that come up, um how they make phone calls to, you know, identify who's been the close contact. So it's it's really more from the educational administrator to a process administrator. So that that's really what they're 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 very busy doing. Um and I think one of the other challenges has been uh access to technology, getting technology. I think we've seen a relief in that. Um but I'll tell you, across the dis- across the the Commonwealth, across the country. Uh securing Chromebooks um in during the summer was extremely difficult. I think in a cushion that has finally received uh the elementary allocation they were they were looking for, but I I think it took a lot of effort to get it. Get it there. Um let's go on to town administration. The town administration. Um managing the needs of the community have been extremely challenging under COVID. And a lot of new responsibilities for um the town offices, uh new responsibilities with police and fire. I would highlight the fire departments and the board of health because of their increased role to supporting schools and testing. Uh that's managed all internally. Um in the in the fire chief and board of health uh director. Uh or the hell, the director of public health in Kuschnit felt very uh grateful that they they've been able to uh stay afloat. But it's been extremely challenging. Uh the frequency of calls and the management, managing of of expectations. Um for their departments, you know, you you have COVID and then you have all this other uh regular responsibilities that have to be taken. But they were very uh again um accommodating of 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 my time and and getting together to talk. Um and and they're a small department and and, you know, all of these departments are are rather small. So it's been uh challenging. Um staffing-wise to be able to meet the needs of the community. Keep in mind that the school department has taken a lot of of resources to be able to uh meet the needs on testing. And ensuring that the protocols that were uh set by the the town and the school department are actually working. And I think although it's a challenge on one side, uh they believe that it's really working on the other. Um and the school committee, you know, I think there there's comments um a- about, you know, we're 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 teaching to the middle. You know, how about our special education students that were struggling getting services for? And how about the super uh the high-end students, the 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 high flyers that are that that just are sponges and. And are ready every day to 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 reach that higher level of of learning. How how is, how are we doing with that? And and that was a concern. Um and I think the the biggest theme, and I and I said this in the narrative in my report, the school committee. Is the 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 theme of the school committee is, you know, not only are you looking out for for your your children, but you have to look up for every child. And I think that that was a a thing that I heard i- is that you are very concerned that. Um the decisions that are made and the protocols and the policies and process that's put out there, um that you're very concerned that. Um kids are at the core of that. And and I heard that loud and clear. Um uh the model is somewhat chaotic because of the Wednesdays, because of the hybrid, because students. Uh matriculating in, matriculating out. I think that that can lead to a little bit of of a of of chaotic. Um position in the sense of how kids are and families are dealing with it. I I think families. Um and I think this was referenced um at a at a significant level across the board with the school committee. Is, you know, this is difficult on parents managing uh how there is coverage at home. How uh parents can support their children academically. And uh in the report, uh there's a a lot more information on this. Uh more specifically on 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 parents feeling um that it's it's difficult to support their children. Because the curriculum from when we all went to school uh and the rigor in certain areas is so different. The pedagogy, methodologies of teaching has changed. And for some parents and on top of that grandparents. Um it's become very difficult for them to support their children at home um with homework, with follow-up. And things of that nature. And um the the last one under this area is really the the lack of interaction, student to students. And this goes back to that uh social emotional concern that the school committee expressed. On how they're, they see their own children and the stories they've heard with, you know, uh constituents that are in the community. On how their children are changing. Um they're 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 different than they were before COVID. Around uh interactions with other kids. And that to uh the school committee uh was expressed. And and I think that really is consistent with the other groups that that we've heard from. So, Madam Chair, I'll I'll turn it back to you for any comments on 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 this on this question.
Thanks, Gary. Um any questions uh members or Dr. Bailey? Yeah?
I just a comment. Um Dr. My assess, if you could just put the screen back in the presentation mode. Because um it's harder to see if it's not on the full screen.
Thanks, Dr. Bailey. I was actually gonna say that myself.
I'm I'm um I've got a a couple of monitors here and I let me uh. Let me see if I can get the right one. Is is this, is that better?
No, it's.
No, it's the same.
How's how's that?
No.
Okay, all right, one second. I think Ron had a question that I can go ahead and and try to answer that. That's that's gotta be uh.
Gary, I was just gonna go back up. If you go back up to students and the third bullet where it says on aspects, I think you hit on this, but can you just? Capture the the key themes on that particular response again for me?
Uh on the online aspects?
Yeah, that that's very challenging for a variety.
Uh it's it's really challenging to engage with the teacher when the teacher is paying attention to students online.
Yeah.
And I think they they found that 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 challenging um because they felt bad that um. I I think they feel almost slighted because they don't have the teacher to themselves, you know what I mean? Um I I believe that was the theme that was um that was presented there. Does that, does that, does that answer your question, Ron?
Yeah, so so if I if I hear that right, that that seems to have potentially been a theme with both students and teachers is and parents. Is that, is that, you're just how the.
Yeah, and and I and I think, I think, you know, I'll I'll try to be as tactile as possible with the kids' comments.
Yeah.
But um they felt that some students weren't being serious about um their learning when they're at home. And 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 they felt that they're engaging, they're doing what they need to do. And uh they kind of. Uh shared that some students were just kind of goofing off and that they weren't really paying attention like they should, you know?
Yeah, okay.
All right.
Any other questions? Okay, and your screen looks back, Gary.
All right, sorry about that. All right, so let's go to um to three. And this is the the big hot button topic that we talked about. And this is where we had more uh dialogue on um, you know, belief on the three-foot, six-foot. Uh stance. I think it's very clear that um students would like to be back. Um, you know, four or five days a week. Um one of the students, first grade student, um young man. Uh just, you know, enduring. He said, uh it it would be great to be back to school. But it would be dangerous. And I I I took that to heart because, you know, he's paying attention. You know, he's listening to what's being said. Um and articulate, just very matter-of-fact. And, you know, the other kids were then, you know, he he was the first, he put his hand right up and that's what he said. The next kid we're talking about. Almost like problem solving. Well, you know, if if we have more kids, we're gonna need more ventilation. We're gonna have to open up more windows. Um, you know, the next one would, you know, thi- this has more hands-on. It's it's more hands-on. They 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 would be able to get more hands-on time. And they thought that that would be a a positive. But it would also allow more kids to come back. But they were very concerned um about masks. And what the protocol would be, uh what it would be if um if they did come back and what school would look like and what the rules would be. I think they felt um really concerned about that. Um I think uh somehow or another, students. Um got information about ventilation and uh opening doors, opening windows and airflow. Because uh one young lady brought that up um and and was concerned about the more you introduce into an environment. Uh the more people you want to introduce into environment, the more ventilation and uh protocol you needed to be able to to keep kids safe. So, you know, it was, it was very positive. I think kids are are listening. Um bottom line, they they would love for more kids to come into school. Um they really felt that that would be uh great. But again, uh concern over how to, how to keep uh kids safe. Um one, one kid, uh one student brought up um the fact that they had. An immune compromised uh family member and they were um it's not quite emotional about it. But you could tell in the in their voice that they were very concerned that if they were um. If if we were to change, that they would be concerned about that the influx of students may cause more. Uh concern for bringing something home. So that was brought up by a a young lady and uh again, very concerned about 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 family. Um um let's go on to parents. I think um, you know, uh parents were absolutely, I I would love to. To 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 see my my kid come back. Um and a lot, you know, I would say it's probably sixty, forty. You may maybe, you know, fifty-five, forty-five, you know, about parents wanting their kids to come back. Or not come back. I think there there are more students or more, excuse me, more families. Anecdotally, on my end. Uh I would say that uh I think there are more parents that would like to keep this the three-foot distancing because of concern. Um but the the caveat I I put with that is they asked the question. What does three-foot distancing mean? Like, uh what what are the protocols? So, you know, it's it's a lot deeper than just, well, this is what three-foot is. If you did do three feet, what are those? What 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 would it look like? What are the protocols? What what are the expectations of families and kids and teachers? If we did do three-foot distancing, you know, what is, what do schools look like? And then, you know, we'll get into to transportation a little bit, but that does tie in a little bit. Um second one, parents, I believe my students need to have more face-to-face, but we can't risk the possibility of infection. Uh again, it was brought up um by families around uh immune issues in in the family. And how they are very concerned that something would come home. Um, you know, a a COVID infection would come home. They're compromising their immune um a compromised uh individual at home. Again, like I mentioned before, you know, what are the protocols uh to allow this to happen? And some parents were absolutely, let's do it. Uh if if we get vaccinated, absolutely. But let's, let's see how we can make this work. So I think a lot of concern over um the whole idea of of what are the conditions of of three-foot? You know, uh you know, I I think that is something that uh parents um were feeling were 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 more of a question. You know, and I and I couldn't answer them. I I said, I I that's gonna be a big uh discussion point for the school district. Um if a three-foot distancing were a possibility, I know school districts around the Commonwealth today are considering what that looks like. Um and every um district looks different, which will take us to the next question, uh next uh group, which is. Teachers and support staff. And 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 that, you know, they need, they see the need to bring students back, but what are the parameters? And I think the administrative group and the cushion is is very willing to look at options. And I think the administrative group and the cushion is is very willing to look at options. But once again, those options have to be have to be vetted. You know, I think the teachers would work with administration on that and they they would really like to understand. For themselves, what those parameters are, and I think we all realized when we were going through the educational models in September. Getting support from the educational teacher community was was difficult. Because they wanted to understand what those parameters are, and I think that was their concern on the parameters. And then they can the the concern for infection is, you know. Will that three foot distancing impact me at a greater level because of that increased potential for COVID infection? And again, what are the expectations? What are the expectations for families, teachers, students? That was a a you know, a question that was brought up that, you know, they'd have to discover what those are. School administration, again, concerned for for infection. We have seen a number of infections transpire in schools. When that does happen to a teacher, it really shuts down a a class, it can't sit down a grade level. And their concern was, how will that impact the school as a whole? And how would it impact grade levels? And the administration as teachers were, they they, you know, what are the options? What and 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 how do we work with the space constraints? And when I was in both the elementary and middle school, I think the the middle school has has more square footage available than the elementary. And I think the concern at the elementary was, you know, how how do we make this work based on the requirements for three foot distancing? That that's that's a concern, I think. Moving on to the school committee. You know, I think the school committee has conveyed to me that there is a significant student socially emotional. States currently, there's an impact in in school and, you know, students are are really being impacted by not being in school. And not having that interaction and being isolated and and and, you know, creating o- other conditions. That they really had no realization from prior to COVID. The next one was a theme of support for the model of of three foot distancing. I think the school committee feels some level of commitment to three foot distancing. But again, I think they understand that there's it's 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 much more difficult than just saying we're gonna go three foot. There are so many parameters that have to be realized and worked out with that. And I I wanna just jump back to the town administration. Because the town administration, when we're talking police, fire, border health, town administrator. They absolutely, absolutely would not support the three foot model. I think they have a lot of questions. They a lot of, a great deal of concern over what that looks like. They did mention that the infection rate has been managed well to this point in the Kushnet. And they believe that if the three foot distancing was introduced, it would compromise the infection rate. And that was something that they felt concerned about, and it was a position that. They 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 were adamant about it. So I bring that up in conjunction with the school committee. Because the school committee does feel an obligation. And and I'll say that, and again, I'm speaking for feedback that I received from the school committee. That they feel somewhat of an obligation to be able to to help children across the board here. To be able to to manage some of the conditions that they're experiencing. And it's a difficult position, but the model they believe has to change. But how do you do that? How do you do that under these conditions? And really for the for the key, for the key premise of of increasing instruction. Live instruction, not live instruction. So with that said, Madam Chair, I'll turn it back to.
Thank you, Sarah.
So Gary, did the town administration, since they were against the three foot, did they mention it all? Was anything talked about the social emotional effects of our students?
No, I I did relate to to them that we were, you know, comments from parents. At at that point, I had talked to parents, I didn't talk to you yet, but parents were really concerned about that social emotional piece. But I think their their lens was clearly looking out for how that infection rate impacts the community. And again, they they have their focus on how to just manage the infection rate where it is. And also the constant testing at six foot and how does that impact their departments? And how does it impact the resources that they have? And also, you know, I think they 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 have been in tune with what the CDC requirements are. And and I think they feel somewhat conflicted with the guidance that they're getting and with what a three foot distance model would look like.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Okay. You can proceed to question.
Alright, Gary. Let's let's go on, and we have the right view, correct? Yes. Okay, good. I I so let's go on to. Free A, this is transportation. And this was relative to, I asked the kids something about transportation and in one middle, I didn't ask the elementary. That the middle school young lady who was very vocal said to me, that that's a question from my parents. So ve- very frank, you know, I I just got to school basically, you know. Let's start with parents. They 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 have no problem get getting their children to school on their own. I I think if they can do it, they'll do it. They they will get their children to school on their own. I think if you would have asked this question to parents. Which you probably did prior to to the school year, you you'd probably get a different reaction than you would today. I think that a lot of parents, the majority of parents indicated that they would. If this was an option, they they would work with the school department to get their kids to school. And and which leaves the the idea that some parents need transportation, they they work. Some parents relay that, you know, they got two jobs, but both parents are working. In some cases, grandparents are watching their kids, they're just actually no capacity to transport. So, you know, I think that's gonna be a challenge if if a three foot distancing model is presented. And again, parents indicated that they would make every effort, you know, to to make the system work. And and get the children to school. There's some titles in this and I apologize for that. I put this together yesterday morning and I haven't had a chance to review it. But I I I I tell you that I think the 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 parents feel that they would do what they need to do. But again, there are some parents that need transportation. Teachers and support staff, the ones that we talked to, wasn't really an issue with supporting in in. Supports up and teachers, a lot of them have already, their kids have already gone through school. And some people that were on the on the call, bring their kids to school anyway, so it really wasn't an issue. School administration, the group indicated that logistics would have to be worked out because that can be challenging. Because you would now have, you know, parents transporting and you would have bus transportation coming onto the campus at the same time. Which would be somewhat of a challenge. And one of the one of the parents did or administrators indicate that. You know, the district would really have to to do a very pointed survey to determine who would need it, when they would need it. But again, you know, a cushion it is, there are some remote parts of town that would definitely need that. And again, town administration, I brought up transportation and they said, well, we don't support the the three foot distancing anyway. So I don't know how that would impact transportation. But I'll tell you that the town administration had full confidence in the school department to to work with them on on. On models. I I they did, they did mention that, that they they feel a great deal of confidence in working with the school department. The school committee felt that they would transport their children. And, you know, one school committee member even mentioned that they would help to 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 transport it with. If it would help others, and it would help to reduce the subscription rate. And 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 I think that was a theme with some of the parents too, that they felt that they would help out in any way that they could. So with that, Madam Chair, if there's any questions on transportation.
No questions here. Any other, yes, Ms. Gomes.
Gary, what would you say the percentage rate for the parents that needed the transportation and and would do other things to get their kids to school? Like the ones that absolutely could not take the tran- or absolutely needed transportation versus not needed, in your opinion?
You know, Sarah, I think I think it's a limited number. You know, again, I think it's very difficult for the quantity of parents that we have, that we had on the forums. There are a handful of parents that really needed the transportation. But again, I I think they would have to look at what the options were. But again, they they were, they just indicated that it was limited. It was, and and again, I think it's it's because of work. But a- again, they they did say if they could do it, they would. And I think there was an immediacy for any kind of support for getting the children in school.
Alright, thank you.
Move on. So let's move on to to four, in the current hybrid model. Are you receiving a, you know, rigorous education considering the limits of the hybrid education model? And I think there are, with parents, there are some courses have been, have demonstrated rigor and 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 challenging coursework. And I think this is one of those, you know, that was brought up with the challenges earlier. It's it's been very difficult to have that rigor. Because it's so difficult for teachers to be able to have some of those hands on activities with some of the remote kids. With the remote kids and to be able to challenge them has been difficult. I think it was mentioned that TACO has demonstrated a, you know, a very rigorous. You know, environment, but limited involvement with, you know, online teachers. So, you know, there there's rigor there, but again, there's that interaction with the with the teacher or teachers has been difficult. Online coursework lacks rigor, it's not challenging students, that seemed to be a theme of the parents. And I would put an asterisk by that for Wednesdays. I think the Wednesday is 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 for for parents difficult. And and I I think parents did, you know, cite that there is a level of rigor. But it it's very difficult when, you know, you have a teacher one day and then you might have a substitute for a week or two weeks or whatever. Because of of a of a stu- a teacher being out. So I think that was one of the comments that was expressed. How do we tighten that up, you know? And there was reference to internet based materials and not teacher produced produced materials. Where, you know, you know, there there were teachers that were were, I think, parents felt that they wanted. The teacher generated content, not necessarily a link to a video or a link to another online assignment. I think they felt that they they that that when they did, when they experienced the work that the KUSHNIT teachers were developing. For their children, that interaction, that rigor was there a lot more defined than than some of the. Other reference materials that were used to be able to help instruct during this time. And and that that was expressed. Let's go to teachers with support staff. I think the teachers really convey that rigor is is really difficult. One of the things that they did cite is that there is, there was a a reference to the to the new curriculum. That's being rolled out across the district. The 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 teachers did identify that there is a difference in the rigor. Of what is being provided through the new curriculum. And and there seemed to be some level of not concern, but awareness. That there is definitely a gap in in where the students were and where they left off last year. And now where we're picking up this year, and the new curriculum is definitely more rigorous. And, you know, and and I think this is brought up with with the with the school committee as well, is how do we monitor that gap? And how do we close that gap? Because, you know, it's it's like the perfect storm, right? You know, you have COVID and you got this whole new curriculum model. That is just, it's very difficult to get the best of it because of the limited time to engage. And I think that was brought up by by teachers and the support staff. Express a level of of difficulty helping to support that because it ties back to that that first challenge. You know, of of the resources and the lack of training they have to support with some of that. The rigor definitely for special education is students, they're not, they're not being challenged to the level of their IEP. And and that was expressed by teachers and and support staff and also by school administration. They they felt it's very difficult under this model to be able to dig deep into what the requirements are. Special education wise for students and also for regular education students and shifting gears. You know, to to identifying that all all students have learning styles. And and teachers evoke different strategies and very difficult to do that sometimes in the in the hybrid model. And technology challenges. The the elementary primarily were expressing difficulty with the hybrid model. And I I have to put an asterisk by that because this was really at the beginning of the school year. And when I when I did the teacher focused groups, they were, that was changing. And I think teachers had just received a week, the week before, were receive teachers, excuse me, students were receiving Chromebooks. At at across the the elementary and they, teachers cited across the board that things were getting much better. But they did also, and you can see in the full report, that they did express a significant level of concern. That some of the younger elementary students were having difficulty. With manipulation of technology, learning some of the, you know, applications that were on. But again, you know, they they didn't receive and in some cases didn't have technology. I think it was cited that the school department did try to close the gap. And I think the administration did talk about how, you know, the the school administration did reach out. To families at the elementary school that if they didn't have technology, could they get technology? And they did, you know, a lot of resource work to 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 try to get technology out to families. I think that condition has changed. And, you know, school administration, again, that this this whole idea of consistency of special education, regular education was 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 apparent. But I think that that really ties in with 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 rigor, you know, and how do how do you make that work? And how do you make these accommodations for students through a remote model and in a hybrid hybrid model? No comment by town administration. And I think the school committee, you know, I highlighted that there there was evidence that their their children. Were experiencing a level of rigor, that they they were lear- learning along a the normal trajectory. Normal meaning the way things were prior to COVID under a challenging time. And I think there were some some examples of that, but yet inconsistent across levels. And I think that was one of the the things that we saw across the different stakeholder groups. And Wednesday i- i- instruction, there's a discernible issue with rigor. And it's and it's and it's more apparent with rigor, you know, it's instruction is with with the. With the with the hybrid model and consistency on Wednesdays is is really. Different than the Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday instruction. So there were some challenges that were presented there with the school committee. So with that said, Madam Chair. With that said, Madam Chair, we'll we'll go back to questions on this question.
Any questions? Okay, we'll proceed.
Alright, let's let's move on. Alright, so um, let's get to question five, and this was uh. You know, suggestions for improving the quality and rigor. Uh, parents, you know, they they couldn't have been louder on this one, just like restructure Wednesdays. Matter of fact, can you please get rid of Wednesdays? I think that that's what parents were saying that. Wednesdays is so difficult to motivate their children to do um that work. Um, the the required uh, you know, piece of Wednesday and 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 that that was a challenge. Um, uh, parents were were very concerned about screen time. And they wanted uh to express that if there's a way to make this uh better or improve it. Uh, was to really look at 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 screen time. Um, and how were there ways to actually embed um more textual assignments and books and reading. That were required opposed to having students online for the quality, for the the quantity of time. Um, and are are there ways to get uh more face-to-face time? Like, is there a model, is there a different way of looking at it, almost thing outside the box? I think that phrase was used. Onto to and I and I and I school, the school departments are trying to do this, and I I think it's really difficult for administration. To look at, how do we think about this differently? But that was one of the points that they tried to make. Is there a way to um break this apart and maybe restructure it so that students get more face time? And that was, that was presented. Um, the next one was teacher and support staff, uh, support staff adamant that they believe that they could do. Um, a better job if they could get some. Um, you know, pointed uh professional development to support teachers with the applications that are are being used. Um, they felt at a disadvantage because kids would ask, students would ask for support and and they felt a little bit. Uh, of the loop because they couldn't do that. Uh, training for parents and grandparents. Um, that was one of the suggestions that the parents brought up, and I heard that. Um, you know, somebody brought it up and they they just, absolutely, we uh, you know, my. My kids are being watched by their grandparents, their their grandparents have no idea. How anything with Google works, how can 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 you provide some kind of training for them? And the applications that are being used online and, you know, that was one of the themes that. Um, was 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 presented around the breakdown and challenge. With uh with grandparents, uh grandparents were were becoming frustrated. Uh, you know, um, students were becoming frustrated with their grandparents and. And and parents did relate to me, and it's in the, it's in the full report. That they felt very uncomfortable with the relationship that their grandparents were having. With their grandchildren because it was an unfamiliar position. It was usually this enduring relationship, and it's become more of this commanding. Um, accountability relationship, which uh they felt very uncomfortable with. And is there a way to break up the groups to align uh best with available personnel? Uh, uh, and that's what, you know, teachers were 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 talking about. Um, defined expectations for students when they are online. Um, I I think, um, you know, the teachers really were adamant about this, you know, what what are kids expected to do when they are online? Because they found it very difficult when there were so many disruptions. Uh, when when students were online, um, you know, supposed to be part of the classroom. And uh, they were, you know, logging in late, leaving early, going to lunch. Um, and and that became somewhat of a challenge for them. Um, school administration, um, they felt that. Um, if there was an opportunity to develop common planning time for. Or grade-level teachers, it's very, very difficult to do. I I've done that in my in my past life and trying to create common planning time. Means that you have to free teachers up for them to all be together at the same time. To be to be able to work on these challenges. Um, it's it's a desire of the administration to be able to have this consistency of instructional strategy. Consistency of curriculum integration, but again, that is a challenge for teachers. And it it's even more of a challenge because um, a lot of the support staff. Um, are 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 really, um, you know, tied up with other roles during this time. Uh, the examine, examine how Wednesdays are structured, that was uh one of the, one of the suggestions of of the administration. And one of the suggestions was, is there an opportunity for uh teachers to check in with students? Where there was a, um, you know, um, a method or a model for. Um, teachers to check in on a weekly basis with students that are are remote. Um, and and maybe that would help to motivate and set a level of expectation. Uh, the school administration felt uh that they have found that the professional development that the district. Plan for this school year has been um, something that is is worked well for teachers. Um, it's just has not been um enough. Uh, they believe that there there needs to be more, even though it's unprecedented to have. You know, ten days of professional development for teachers. Um, this is um very uh a very difficult time and I think. Um, to be able to include everyone in those. Um, in those um opportunities is difficult because. There's a variety of professional development pieces that have to be taken into consideration. Town administration, no comment to to this question. Um, the school committee, or one of the thoughts was perhaps assigning a separate online teacher. And and that that of course creates another capacity uh challenge uh that the school department would have to realize, but. I know some districts have done that, but it has created a monetary challenge for uh the community because they've had to commit to. To having a uh a dedicated online on instruction, which is with a a teacher that is committed to that. And while all other alternative avail- are alternatives are available, like, how do we think out of the box? Um, to actually address some of these issues, I think socially-emotional um i- is really driving some of this. Um, but again, rigor and quality, um, if if we had kids that were a little bit more engaged. Um, they may be um, this this rigor and quality may improve. Which really leads to the whole discussion that I had with the school committee about. About the um, the desire to try to get uh kids more face time. Uh, more face-to-face time, and that that was um, something that, again, as you have heard, this whole discussion we've had for. The last, uh, geez, I'm not sure, hour and a half, hour plus. Um, that that it's it's important to try to to get. Um, more face time, so with that, Madam Chair, I'll uh, I'll I'll turn it back to you.
No, thank you, I have no questions.
Alright, um, let's move on to um the next slide and we'll see. I'm gonna have to, I close the presentation, give me one second to get back on the pool. Full one again. Alright, so let's, let's go to um, question six. And this is with the mask uh and water breaks within the classroom. Um, you know, I think the parents were were torn on this because. Uh, you know, a sip of water in the classroom i- is different than a mask break, and I think they felt that. If, I I think parents felt collectively that. Um, a sip of water in the classroom is uh is acceptable. But it's only a quick sip of water, it's not take your mask off, leave it off for a couple minutes. And then put it back on while you're drinking water, and I think that was the, um, you know, self-regulation, self-moderation of students. I think parents feel that their children have definitely adapted to the masks, have adapted to the protocols. Um, we'll talk a little about that, about that with teachers, wh- what they had to say about it, but I think. Um, again, they said the sip of water is a little bit different than a mask break. The mask breaks, uh, I think the parents felt that um. There, they were less concerned about these two topics now than they were at the beginning of the school year. Because uh they seem to have worked. Um, but I think parents felt very, uh, I got more comments from parents that. They were more uncomfortable with taking a mask break in in a traditional classroom setting. Than going outside, I think they felt if, you know, that we can't compromise that. The masks, you know, one of the parents even cited um, research on on masks. Said he wasn't a scientist, but, you know, mask breaks, the the mask is what's keeping us and keeping this infection rate down. We we should keep those protocols with the mask breaks. Um, if the process is well-defined and protos- protocols are explained, children will make it work, and I think. That's kind of the theme with parents that they really said, said that they they believe if. Uh, I think there's a level of trust in the school department that was um communicated across the board. That the protocols are worked, are working, they 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 have been explained and and teachers are monitoring them and things are working well. Which leads to, you know, the 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 common sip 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 of water is fine, just different, and you know. Um, you know, and 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 going back again, that if this was said more than once, mask breaks in the classroom. You know, are going to be very challenging because um, how do you monitor it? How do you ensure that kids are doing it? Um, which really brought up um, an issue with parents that. Uh, i- is and it's in the transcript, and it's relative to mask breaks. And even with the three-foot distancing protocol, and and it was brought up around lunches. You know, what are kids gonna do for lunches when you have that many students? And are the masks, you know, how do you, how do you divide that up, you know, because if you did a three-foot distancing, you you'd have to really look at. How that mask is gonna be worn and uh when and how many students, how, what's the structure of the cafeteria, stuff like that, so. That was definitely um discussed. Uh, let's move to teachers and support staff. Um, I think uh the teachers and support staff were very clear that the students have adapted to the protocols. And have done a tremendous job with it. Um, it was very clear that uh the students at the elementary are are like, the the face mask is. Is like second nature, matter of fact, one of the um support staff mentioned that. Um, or teachers mentioned that she can see the playground from her classroom, and she mentioned that. You know, kids go out uh on their mask break or recess break, and they're they they forget that they even have the mask on, so I think. They felt that the kids are have really adapted it, adapted well to it, and um, the protocols have worked. Um, there is concern that this will be handled differently from teacher to the teacher. Uh, teacher brought that up, that, you know, um, if I. Allow my students have a water break and the the next teacher wants to stick with the protocols. That could create a level of confusion in in, uh, that's why they say that, that they they said that the the protocols have to be explained and monitored. And I think uh teachers did express this, and and again, I'll 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 reference the report in the transcript. They 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 were very adamant that. Um, the monitoring of all these protocols is very difficult for for teachers. And any support that they could get on this would be appreciated, uh, but they felt it was very difficult. Um, more in the ele- uh, more in the middle school than the elementary. I think teachers uh at the middle school found it challenging at times for kids to follow the rules with the mask. Um, you know, you know, putting it down below the nose uh at times. But they felt that if you did compromise on the water breaks and the and the mask breaks, that that would be more of a problem, and monitoring would be difficult. Uh, school administration, uh, small breaks for water in the classroom, in their opinion, would be acceptable, but clearly defined protocols. And I think that um, they felt that they could uh work within those protocols. Um, if I could go back to parents, uh, and again, this is in the the transcript, there was a, um, excuse me, it was teachers. The teachers, uh, a teacher actually brought up that there was a discussion early on in 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 the the September professional development. And communication at the building level that um, there would be some level of tapering of. Some of these rules around sip breaks and water breaks. Um, and um, they they said that, I I, you know, one of the teachers quoted that. You know, I think they can be adapted, and they they thought that that was a natural progression. In what was gonna happen based on how the years, how the year would go, so I think um, that was uh cited. Um, and let's go to the uh town administration. Uh, they they relied on, you know, if they rely on the school department to really. Uh, come up with the strategies and address the adaptations to um this, they they really didn't have. Uh, a stake on on the mask and water breaks, they really left it up to the school department and the school committee. Uh, concerned about removing masks uh for more than what was allowed now. Um, because I think it really compounds with the statements that parents were making, you know, possible modifications to the process. Um, and they would take those recommendations from the school districts, uh, from the school administration and central office. And other other schools are allowing this to happen differently than a Krishna. Uh, and what does that look like in in and and maybe some of those strategies that are employed. Uh, but other districts uh may be able to 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 be uh worked into the operation here, so. And can there be a modification to to give these opportunities for both the water mask and and sip sip breaks? Um, I will say, in in closing on on question six, parents did express. A level of concern that their children were not consuming water. Um, the way they were prior to COVID, and uh they contributed that deficiency to. Um, the ability to have, um, you know, water on a as-needed basis opposed to the sip. Um, basis, you know, on that timeline, so with that, Madam Chair, um, I'll turn it back to you.
Okay, thank you, Gary, any final questions? I think that's our last question.
Yeah, one more, it's relative to uh special education.
Okay, alright, any questions? And it is seven, so I'm just hoping we could maybe just summarize a little quicker, just because it is getting late.
Yes, so if we go to uh seven, uh, this is relative to um. Let me put the screen on, and this is, um, seven has um a little. Let me uh try to get my screen share on here. Excuse my uh, I'm trying to get my screen share. On again. Give me one second, excuse the uh the time. Alright, so I'm gonna back up and and get to, you can see that, correct? Okay, so let's get to to seven, um, and and I'll be quick about this, that that seven was really about. The remote days, um, and and really focusing on special education. Um, and this is, uh, you know, thi- this was very difficult for for students. Um, you know, students um, found that it was frustrating, we did talk about it earlier. Um, students showing up later, being loud, etc. Uh, parents, for the most part, parents were frustrated with the virtual component. Um, uh, parents are are were very grateful for teachers doing the best they can, and they understand it's challenging. Uh, teachers with support staff, you know, remote days were were very difficult. Um, to ensure that students are engaged. Uh, you know, one of the common expectations of students, going back to that theme, uh, school administration is very challenging. Uh, the quality i- in some areas is 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 inconsistent. And um, elementary during early mode was very challenging, um, because there was some technology um inequities. And I think that that's been resolved, and the school committee, there are citations of some quality. Um, educational lessons and opportunities for, but it's been inconsistent. Um, I think the biggest issue that that parents felt uh with this question is is relative to especially. is, is relative to uh, special education, and we did talk about that before. Parents um, uh, with students that, that, that students of, of, excuse me, parents that had students with IEPs found this to be extremely, extremely frustrating and challenging. So with that said, Ms. Madam Chair, I'll turn, turn it back to you and, and, and have some overarching thoughts, comments, questions.
Okay, any questions on the special education piece by the committee? No, none here either. Do you have any other things to present? I know you had a couple more slides, Gary, or are you just looking for overall comment from the committee on what you've presented thus far?
You know, Jen, I'll, I'll just talk about um, some overarching uh, thoughts. Um, holistically, two or three minutes on, on that. I think
Okay.
Um, parents across the board in a Christian feel that uh, their children are having a level of difficulty with the, the lack of interaction. I think that, that is consistent across the board. I think they've had some um, adjustments that they, they've made, um, but still it, it's a big challenge. I think there's um, a, a desire to have more face to face. Um, but again, that, that three foot, six foot distancing piece. Um, one of the recommendations that I, I put into my uh, report is I think uh, a Christian is probably gonna have to do a very detailed survey so parents can understand what the protocols and parameters are with three foot. Because that's what they want to know before they could chime in to help make a decision if they feel comfortable or not. I think the other thing that's going to be extremely challenging, and I know school districts across the board, across the country are struggling this, with this right now, is how do you get all those students back into school? Um, and make it workable and so that students can actually um, matriculate through the school day. Um, and protocols are going to keep everyone safe. I think teachers are concerned because of um, you know, age uh, and the potential for infection. Um, and I think that's, that's somewhat of a challenge. And I said, I talked about before, I think the school, um, excuse me, the, the town administration um, felt very uncomfortable with, with changing. Again, th- they did not, we didn't get into protocols on what a three foot model would look like. Uh, that was not part of the discussion. Um, but again, that, that I think would be a challenge.
Okay, thank you, Gary. I, I appreciate your presentation this evening. It certainly will, um, we have a lot to think about as a committee as we continue to evaluate. You know, how we proceed and all of our hopes is to get kids back to school as soon as possible, but of course safely. So thank you for tonight's presentation. Um, members, any final thoughts or questions you'd like to share before we um, conclude? Yeah, Sarah?
So are we going to discuss all of this at our next school committee meeting? Will that be on the agenda? Okay.
Yeah, I think absolutely.
Okay.
That will be the next step.
So I'll leave my comments for them.
Okay, yeah, I think it'll be good for us to kind of take what we've learned tonight, think about it a little bit, and we can come back together with, with questions uh, to further brainstorm and, and think about the best approach going forward. Okay, um, yeah, John.
Just gonna ask, in terms of process and coming back to the, to the next meeting, and maybe this is a question for Dr. Bailey, is would we expect that coming into that meeting that based on the information and the feedback that we've got, that Dr. Bailey, you're gonna present? You know, some, some alternatives, some, an action plan essentially in terms of some of the changes that we may or may not make? I'm just trying to wrap my head around timing, because by the time we get to the next meeting, we're in March. And um, school year is not that far. Uh, and so just trying to wrap my head around what the timing's gonna be in terms of, you know, when we would potentially start to, there, there was clearly some things in the, in the report that might be low hanging fruit that we could knock off, right? And then there are obviously some bigger things like three foot distant, uh, distancing and things. And so I'm just trying to wrap my head around sequencing and timing.
Yes, do you want me to respond?
I would love you to respond.
Yeah, so I know that Desi will be coming out um, with new guidelines or updated guidelines within the next week or two. Um, but we've been following all of the guidelines and protocols. I think the biggest concern for me right now is the identification of close contacts. So with the protocols that we currently have in place, um, it's, it's good in the sense that kids don't have to unexpectedly be out of school for two weeks because they're now identified as a close contact, and that would be within the six feet. So if they're within six feet, and again, my question is, is that protocol going to change with the CDC, right? Um, but where, you know, the principals and I, um, the school leadership team has been meeting consistently to try to um, get in as many students as possible. Um, and we're even willing to think out of the box. But um, I think right now the school is still looking at six feet based on the protocols and the um, identification of close contacts. So, but we're there, we want, we agree with um, getting as many kids in as possible. And you know, I think our teachers would be fine with that as well, if we can safely do that. Um, we would be all in favor of that. I do agree that the protocols have been working for us in terms of our level of, um, we've had no evidence of spread within the school. Um, so again, we're looking at any open seats that we currently have. Any um, students that may be having some difficulty. Um, our priority right now is grade two, because they're the youngest students that are not in four days. Um, so we're trying to look at that to see what we can do before the end of the school year as soon as possible, actually, with grade two. Um, but you know, as you can imagine, the logistics of making that work. Um, you know, we'd be possibly looking at moving a classroom based on space. And you know, there's a lot of logistics um, to making these things work. But we're willing, you know, my school team, I, I believe the teachers and the administration are clearly willing to think out of the box um, to make as much, as many students back as possible work safely.
Sure, and I, and I, and I appreciate all those things, and they're all challenges, right? And so there's a spectrum of, you know, we, we make no changes till we get everybody back in school full time, right? And, and there, there was also some things in there like, um, you know, those days, the kids that are in school, right, on, on their days for in school and the kids that are out of school. There's, there's some challenges there with the kids that are online versus the kids that are in the classroom, right? And so that's something that was a theme, I think, across all the groups that clearly I think we need to look at. Wednesdays was a theme, so there's these, there's other things in conjunction with maybe getting some more kids back in school that, that obviously I think we need to, so think outside the box and look at alternatives that can enhance um, the current model, the current model.
Right, and I do, you know, think that our current model did work um, in terms of giving our teachers the professional development that they needed with all of the new curriculum and technology. I think it's paid off well in terms of strengthening the teaching and learning that we had from last spring to the current school year. I've heard a lot of positives on that. Um, but we're willing to, you know, make, adapt and make adjustments as necessary. And that's what we've continued to do. We've said all along that there's no playbook on this hybrid model, and this pandemic is new for everyone. And we've always made the best decisions we can with what we, with the knowledge that we have in terms of what is safe um, and what people can handle. So um, it's not lost on us that there are some struggles. I, I know I'm a parent too, and I have the same issues with my own children at home. Um, you know, I'd love for them to be in school every day. So we're definitely, it's a conversation that happens all the time, um, and we're working on things. So, you know, I guess I need some direction and, you know, what are you looking for from me in terms of, for the March meeting?
I, I guess I'm asking. Oh, go ahead.
Sorry.
Yeah, I was, uh, uh, Mr. Hood, Ms. uh, Ms. Downing, Ms. Bailey. I, I was just thinking that, you know, we have a workshop on the 24th. Maybe that's a, a good time for us to, you know, pick up a, a discussion on that.
Mm-hmm. I, I agree. I think that would be a good idea, John. Thanks.
I agree.
And that way, um, when we're having kind of a more, also, uh, you know, a, a, a more formal discussion in, in a school committee setting, then we would, you know, kind of be more prepared as a group um, to tackle some of those issues. That's just my thoughts.
Sure.
Yeah, I agree, and I think if we can all agree as a committee before that time to really think about some of the themes you heard and areas where you'd like to um, suggest we take a deeper dive. Um, you know, I'm thinking about the Wednesday situation.
Yeah, I mean, my, my, well, my biggest concern about the 24th would be Ms. Gomes can't attend.
Well, I can now.
You can? All right, cool.
Okay, good. Um, so you know, maybe we can all come to that discussion with a few suggestions for Dr. Bailey on areas where um, we really want to be deliberate about um, trying to put a plan together um, on making some changes based on the input we've, we've heard from the community.
Yeah, because I, I agree with Ron. I mean, and, and my, my only comment on this would be, you know, I, I, I felt like, you know, when we first brought up the idea of having these kind of forums, I felt like, you know, uh, the idea got hijacked a little bit and, and it, you know, took so, I'm never happy with how long things take, you know, to happen. So, but I'm, at, at this point, I'm really glad that, um, you know, we had Gary run those groups. Gary, thank you um, for the, for the information. I think we're all, you know, pretty um, pleased with the output. There's a lot to go through. I've been through a ton of it. Um, I think some of the, the transcript was tough to read out of context, but you know, really thank you. I think for, for, you know, doing that um, for the district, and I think we, we've got a lot of work to do.
So since everybody is, I thought I was the only one that wanted to um, start working on things right away. But it seems like Ron and John, everybody really wants to get going on this. So I, I have four points for you, Paula, if you could just look into it for our next meeting. The Wednesday protocols, maybe some more check-ins. I know there's two check-ins per teacher, maybe two or three, uh, three or four check-ins for Wednesdays to help out parents. Number two, policy for uh, students that are remote. Maybe they need to sign an agreement, the parents and the children and the teachers on, they have to stick to their uh, teacher schedules. Less fooling around, remote. Number three, the water breaks for sips. Maybe we can add that in sooner than later if it's agreed upon. And number four, the monitoring of the students and the teachers to make sure that the teachers are all on the same page across the district and students are as well with, with expectations. Those are my four points.
Sarah, can you just give me a little more clarification on the last one? You talked about the monitoring of students and teachers with expectations.
Yep, there just seems to be um, like just a common sense that I don't know if it was per grade level or not, but that students are not all on the same page with the, I don't know if it was discipline or how they, they act remotely versus class. Maybe some sort of monitoring for that. I picked up on that. As well as teachers, some teachers may follow certain rules and others. I, I, I picked up on that as well during the presentation. So again, these are just suggestions that maybe we can start working on for our next meeting.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
All right, any other last comments on this? No? Okay.
I, I just want to thank, I want to thank um, the committee for being open to this process as well as Dr. Maestis. Um, I know that he's put in, it's obvious from the report, I think it was about 256 pages of, of information and that you put in quite a bit of time, and it was just very much appreciated.
And I um, I, I will help in any way I can if you need any, just a phone call. It doesn't, whatever you need, let me know.
Thank you.
Yeah, Gary, I, I, I appreciate the work you did and your willingness to be so flexible to um, to meet with folks, so I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, before we wrap up, I do want to circle back to Kelly just to see if any public comment has come in over the last hour or so.
Yes, so we did receive um, a couple of questions for our school committee members um, from Jamie Alves who lives on White Street. And the first question is, why did the school district spend money on an outside company to collect and analyze this information when it could have been done in-house? And the second question is, is there any discussion about bringing grade two through four back in, full in person?
Um, I mean, I can, I can just comment on the first question that I think it was really important to the school committee to have a neutral um, voice and a neutral person conducting these um, conversations so that there would be absolutely uh, no potential conflict of interest um, and that we would get um, an unbiased um, you know, communication and feedback to us. I think that was our decision there. We felt very, that that was very important as a committee. Um, Dr. Bailey, I would, I would, that second question, I'm sorry, Kelly, I can't.
Yeah, so I can certainly take that one. Um, if there's been any discussion, and yes, there's always discussion. I would say that grade two has been our priority in the discussions to try to make that work first. Um, and believe me, there's so many logistics to figure out. Um, but you know, we think that the remote learning works best for the older children, older students. So our priority is definitely to go by the elementary school grade levels. And that's why we prioritize kindergarten and first grade to be in person four days a week, which has worked really well for families and students and teachers. Um, and now that next step is looking at grade two and then three, and then four, um, based on how well they do with the remote learning and the hybrid.
Other public comment? Oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, no, no.
Sorry for cutting you off.
Nope, I'm good.
Okay.
There is, oh, another one more that just came in. Sorry, didn't read it off my computer. Uh, special education, uh, same person, Jamie Alves on White Street. Special education students should be going four days a week. Moving classrooms to different spaces in order to bring back more students at six feet could happen. Are the gym and library being used as classrooms in the elementary school? And do families prefer their children doing live lessons on their hybrid out days? Or would they be okay with those days being asynchronous with check-ins from the teacher?
Is, is that a question for Dr. Maestis?
The subject just said school committee questions.
John, do you want to comment?
No, I think, I think though, all those things are probably on the table have been, some of them have been discussed and probably need to be brought up again, but.
I would say, uh, Dr. Bailey, the question about how um, the gym is in, being utilized at the elementary school, I think you could probably answer that.
Yep, so the gym is being utilized um, as a cafeteria. Um, and at the middle school as well, we have half of the gym being used so that students can eat at an eight foot distance safely. Um, and then part of the gym is being used for phys ed, and kids also use outside space. We're also looking at, um, today we just had a discussion, we have people utilizing our elementary school library. Um, but we're looking at a different way that we could perhaps make a switch which may allow more students into school. Um, and we're trying to work out those logistics and details to utilize any big space that we have to bring more students back at the appropriate safe distance. Um, also, I don't know if the school committee is interested in me looking into other options, but you know, other off-site options, uh, you know, that's been brought up. You know, I'm more than happy to look into that as well. Um, just keeping in mind. Just keeping in mind the logistics get pretty interesting once you start talking about things like that because that involves in the middle of a school year, moving people. But, you know, that's another option that we could look into as well. And again, that's just thinking out of the box.
Yeah, I personally am a proponent of looking at all of the options. And if some of those options materialize, materialize and become real, then we and we can have conversations about what logistics will be required to make it happen. And we can figure out if that can happen, right? But I'd rather have, have something be a potential option than, than, than obviously not exploring it.
Okay.
Great.
And we have one more. The selectman wanted to pass along to the staff how impressed he is with the progress and the execution of our plan. He said his kids come, come home smiling every day. He also said he would like to help the teachers get vaccinated and we have his support in doing that.
Fantastic. Thank you.
What selectman was that?
Warner, W O J?
Wonar.
Yep.
Thank you, Kelly.
You're welcome.
Great.
I was at the board of selectmen's meeting earlier tonight presenting to them, and that's when Mr. Wonar had mentioned that to me during the board of selectmen's meeting. So I passed that on to Dr. Bailey and Mrs. Bennerbees. So we were very happy with how things are going.
Great. All right. Thanks for that feedback.
That's it for me.
Jen, you're on mute.
Thanks. Sorry. Just looking at the agenda before we adjourn, I just want to point out there are a few communications that are noted there that committee members have received. We have no executive session tonight. Our next regular school committee meeting will be held remotely on Tuesday, March 2nd, 2021 at 5:30. And we do have a public school committee workshop that is on March 24th. Is that correct? Dr. Bailey?
February.
February 20.
Oh, sorry.
February.
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 Thank you. At 5:30 as well. And so if there is no further comments, I'd like to request a motion, please, to adjourn.
Make a motion and adjourn.
Second.
Okay, no further discussion? All right, great. And we'll take our roll call vote to close out tonight.
Mrs. Gomes?
Yes.
Mr. Sumner?
Yes.
Mr. Tebs?
Yes.
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
And Mrs. Downing?
Yes. Okay. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.